Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's date is Thursday, May 26, 2016. The time is 8:30 a.m. And we'll begin by following our agenda. The first is our roll call.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Present.
Vonck.
Present.
Vander Mullen.
Here.
Talan.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Schroll.
Present.
Honstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Chivas.
Here.
Wachowski.
Present.
Breeby.
Here.
Holter.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
We will now move to Agenda Item 3, which is an invocation by Commissioner Hennessy.
Good morning. I have brought a fellow West Sider, Andrew Sisson, who works as a community connector. And he works at the Gold Avenue Church as the Director for Community Connections and with the newer group, the West Side Collaborative. So cooperation is certainly the byword on the West Side right now. So I introduce to you Andrew. He is married, has two young children, and is very important to our neighborhood right now.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here this morning and have this invitation before our elected officials in our government. I'd like to open to read from the Bible, the Book of Deuteronomy, Chapter 6. "These commandments that I give to you today are to be upon your hearts. Impress them on your children; talk about them when you sit at home and when you walk along the road, when you lie down and when you get up. Tie them as symbols on your hand and bind them on your foreheads. Write them on the doorframes of your houses and on your gates. Be sure to keep the commands of the Lord God and the stipulations and the decrees that he gives to you. Do what is right and good in the Lord's sight, so that it may go well with you." These are God's instructions for Moses to give to Israel with the stern call to action to be sure to engrave them on their hearts and impress them on their children. God wanted his people to be completely consumed by reflecting on them and obeying them and not to let their later generations forget them. The instructions God gave to the Israelites weren't how to have a perfect society, but to how to have a just society. They were a blueprint for dealing with the concerns of the poor and the distribution of resources. Protection for the widow, liberation for the enslaved, limitation on the power of rulers, justice in warfare, and protection for the orphan, stranger, sick, and foreigner among them. They were later summarized by Jesus, God's own Son, as to love your neighbor as you love yourself. But it's no wonder that the first and greatest commandment was to first love the Lord God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength. Without this first love, it would be insufficient to build a nation simply by practicing individual justice. We as humans need to first realize that the authentic origin of justice is the one and only true God. Only in this recognition and relationship with him through his son, Jesus Christ, are we as imperfect humans able and motivated to truly love and lead others. As elected officials, where do you look for justice? How do you define it? What is your foundation? Is it a wavering reed of human desire and personal ambition? Or is it a solid cornerstone of God who never changes? The Creator of all things and the Author of life and Definer of justice, the Creator of government, do you look to Christ as the King of kings and the Lord of lords? Heavenly Father, I ask that today you would impart your wisdom on this body to make just decisions to lead your people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. We move next to Agenda Item Number 5, which is Public Common. Is there any public comment today? I am not seeing any, so we will move next to Agenda Item 6, which is our Consent Agenda. And I will call on Commissioner Hennessy.
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Support.
Support by Vice Chair Schroll. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Wachowski.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes. And I once again call on Commissioner Jones for the next motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution today's date 43, approve the Community Development Annual Action Plan and Budget Amendment from Community Development.
Support by Commissioner Vander Mullen. Any questions or comments on this item? I'm seeing none, so it is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Wachowski.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes. We move then to our Resolutions under Item 7. And for the first one, I call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution today's date 43, approve the Community Development Annual Action Plan and Budget Amendment from Community Development.
Support by Commissioner Vander Mullen. Any questions or comments on this item? I'm seeing none, so it is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Wachowski.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair. Yes. Motion passes. And I once again call on Commissioner Jones for the next motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution today's date 44, to approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreements with various agencies and authorize the Board Chair to sign, also presented by Community Development.
Support. Support by Commissioner Mast. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Mast?
I just want to, I guess, recognize a lot of these nonprofit agencies that are always struggling, and we give them some sufficient funds. And I think this is as a result of Matthew Benzanton's work, kind of picking this up. So thank you, Matthew, for kind of getting these together. And I actually also should thank this board and the Community Development Department for quite a bit of money that flowed through the city of Kent with some special projects that got done. And I think those are very much appreciated. Thank you too, Matthew.
Very good. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. Soffeld, I just would like to disclose that I'm a board member on the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. They're receiving some of these funds, but I'm a volunteer member and I have no financial interest in this one.
Okay. Do I need to also? Any other?
Do I need to? Because I'm a member of the Senior Meals Board. I don't get any personal compensation. Is that something we need to do?
That's probably not a bad idea.
All right. I'm a member of the Senior Meals Board. If I disclose that.
Very good. Any other questions or disclosures, I should say?
Not a disclosure, but just a quick edit to Commissioner Mast's comments that he stated that we give sufficient funds to these organizations. We give funds to these organizations which aren't sufficient to meet the needs. I hate to be such a whatever this morning, but for example, that Item Number 4, Hope Network for Transportation Services, those services are so extremely rationed in our townships. As was pointed out to us in October last week, we had a conversation with my day job with some township supervisors. Folks get rationed 16 rides a month, you know? And so how can you have a job if you only can do 16 one-way trips a month and things like that? So when we talk about these funds, the word sufficient should not be in the sentence. They're extremely efficiently used by these organizations. They are a great addition to these organizations. They are a few miles from sufficient in my book. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think I had an "I" in front of it. Insufficient.
Oh, I'm sorry. My...
Oh, never mind.
Never mind. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. And my apologies, Commissioner Mast.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions, so we will ask the Clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Wachowski.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes. And I once again call on Commissioner Jones for the next motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution today's date 44, to approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreements with various agencies and authorize the Board Chair to sign, also presented by Community Development.
Support. Support by Commissioner Mast. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Mast?
I just want to, I guess, recognize a lot of these nonprofit agencies that are always struggling, and we give them some sufficient funds. And I think this is as a result of Matthew Benzanton's work, kind of picking this up. So thank you, Matthew, for kind of getting these together. And I actually also should thank this board and the Community Development Department for quite a bit of money that flowed through the city of Kent with some special projects that got done. And I think those are very much appreciated. Thank you too, Matthew.
Very good. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. Soffeld, I just would like to disclose that I'm a board member on the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. They're receiving some of these funds, but I'm a volunteer member and I have no financial interest in this one.
Okay.
Do I need to also?
Any other?
Do I need to? Because I'm a member of the Senior Meals Board. I don't get any personal compensation. Is that something we need to do?
That's probably not a bad idea.
All right. I'm a member of the Senior Meals Board. If I disclose that.
Very good. Any other questions or disclosures, I should say?
Not a disclosure, but just a quick edit to Commissioner Mast's comments that he stated that we give sufficient funds to these organizations. We give funds to these organizations which aren't sufficient to meet the needs. I hate to be such a whatever this morning, but for example, that Item Number 4, Hope Network for Transportation Services, those services are so extremely rationed in our townships. As was pointed out to us in October last week, we had a conversation with my day job with some township supervisors. Folks get rationed 16 rides a month, you know? And so how can you have a job if you only can do 16 one-way trips a month and things like that? So when we talk about these funds, the word sufficient should not be in the sentence. They're extremely efficiently used by these organizations. They are a great addition to these organizations. They are a few miles from sufficient in my book. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think I had an "I" in front of it. Insufficient.
Oh, I'm sorry. My...
Oh, never mind.
Never mind. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. And my apologies, Commissioner Mast.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions, so we will ask the Clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Wachowski.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes. And I once again call on Commissioner Jones for the next motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution today's date 44, to approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreements with various agencies and authorize the Board Chair to sign, also presented by Community Development.
Support. Support by Commissioner Mast. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Mast?
I just want to, I guess, recognize a lot of these nonprofit agencies that are always struggling, and we give them some sufficient funds. And I think this is as a result of Matthew Benzanton's work, kind of picking this up. So thank you, Matthew, for kind of getting these together. And I actually also should thank this board and the Community Development Department for quite a bit of money that flowed through the city of Kent with some special projects that got done. And I think those are very much appreciated. Thank you too, Matthew.
Very good. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. Soffeld, I just would like to disclose that I'm a board member on the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. They're receiving some of these funds, but I'm a volunteer member and I have no financial interest in this one.
Okay.
Do I need to also?
Any other?
Do I need to? Because I'm a member of the Senior Meals Board. I don't get any personal compensation. Is that something we need to do?
That's probably not a bad idea.
All right. I'm a member of the Senior Meals Board. If I disclose that.
Very good. Any other questions or disclosures, I should say?
Not a disclosure, but just a quick edit to Commissioner Mast's comments that he stated that we give sufficient funds to these organizations. We give funds to these organizations which aren't sufficient to meet the needs. I hate to be such a whatever this morning, but for example, that Item Number 4, Hope Network for Transportation Services, those services are so extremely rationed in our townships. As was pointed out to us in October last week, we had a conversation with my day job with some township supervisors. Folks get rationed 16 rides a month, you know? And so how can you have a job if you only can do 16 one-way trips a month and things like that? So when we talk about these funds, the word sufficient should not be in the sentence. They're extremely efficiently used by these organizations. They are a great addition to these organizations. They are a few miles from sufficient in my book. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think I had an "I" in front of it. Insufficient.
Oh, I'm sorry. My...
Oh, never mind.
Never mind. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. And my apologies, Commissioner Mast.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions, so we will ask the Clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Wachowski.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Holter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair. Yes. Motion passes. And I once again call on Commissioner Jones for the next motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution today's date 45, Continuum of Care Program, Contracts, and Budget Appropriation by Community Development.
Support. Support by Commissioner Mast. Questions or comments on this item? I'm seeing... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Talan?
This is 45, right?
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah. I am a staff person for the continuum of care, and as such, although I'd love to make some positive comments about the work that's happening by that organization in this community, I probably should refrain from anything specific. And I will abstain from this vote because of a potential conflict of interest as deemed by HUD.
All right. It will be noted. I see nothing else. We'll call the question. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Honstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
of Grand Rapids' number-one citizen, our former president. And so it's going to be on, I believe, National Geographic this weekend, writing that, and it'd be very well worth your time to see it, to witness it. Very well-done.
I think I saw Friday evening. Is that right?
Yes, I believe it is. Quite two separate times.
Two showings on Friday evening on that channel. You might want to cable it or tape it or whatever, so if you're not around. Commissioner Mast?
Well, just to follow on with Commissioner Voorhees. USS Gerald R. Ford is just being launched, a super, supercarrier that's going to be a tremendous addition to our weapon system in the country. That's kind of an honor for a townboy from here. They're making a big splash in the Navy.
It'd be great if we could start it here.
Literally. It's $18 billion it costs.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Vonck and I share the majority of Rockford Public Schools in our districts, and on behalf of Rockford Public Schools, we really want to congratulate their recent announcement, which is come fall of next year of 2017, the Rockford Public Schools High School Band will be in the Macy's Day Parade. So for them and for the students and the families that are participating for the community, what a wonderful achievement for that group. So thanks.
Yeah, outstanding. Will you be there?
I will be. Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Breeby?
Yeah, on Tuesday, I had the opportunity to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony at my children's school. At Dutton Christian, they won a brand-new playground, and it was through TerraCycle, which does recycling worldwide. And the school has a very robust, very robust recycling program that the students sort everything. And this was won through Colgate and Meyer, so recycling toothbrushes, toothpaste, dental-related products. And all the parents donated stuff or recycled things and donated their time. And TerraCycle is just a huge organization, and what's really interesting is that so each year, they donate a playground to a school. There's two other schools in my district that are in the running for next year to get it. So we may have another ribbon-cutting ceremony, but it's kind of a big deal. It's about a $40,000 piece of equipment, and the school was very excited. Media was on hand, and it was just a great opportunity to participate in that. So congratulations, Dutton.
Great. Commissioner Wachowski?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate unfortunately the sad news that Matthew had passed around concerning one of our Housing Commission members and Chair, Daryl Domke. Daryl's been a friend for over 20 years, and yeah, it's unfortunate that he died at the young age of 59. His legacy, though, in the community will continue due to his good work related to accessible and affordable housing. So the plans are that the formal services will be up in the Rogers City area where he's from, and some of his friends were conspiring to do something locally. So we'll keep you posted when that happens, but again, to honor Daryl and his impact in our county.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy?
Well, tis the season, and there's always something happening at the zoo. So if the animals are not enough, there's new food offerings, and the gift shop is really a very interesting place to go. Commissioner Voorhees and I hope that you will join us at Ronde Zoo, which is on Friday, June 10. That will be, you know, it's a fun evening with lots of good food, music, good companionship. And this is the 125th anniversary for the zoo, and so one of the things they're doing is having 125 days where you can sponsor the day at the zoo and name it in honor of someone who is near and dear to you. And so you're welcome to join me on my day, which for my first grandchild, which will be on Saturday, June 4. And we're going to have the animal of the day is the red-eyed green tree frog. The red eyes are very intent on looking at things, and really, that is my grandchild. I said it was perfect. I didn't know that at the time, but the zoo and its newsletters is promoting this and telling us more about the animals. So I learned more about the animal on shows.
Very good. We'll look for that. Thanks for that update on the zoo. Any other miscellaneous? I am seeing none.
I have one quick... I had my hand up. I'm sorry. Very quickly, I attended a community meeting last night in my district regarding a poison plume, a poison vapor plume, which has displaced two nonprofits and two apartments above. And I have to commend the Health Department for their quick response, but I'm a little disturbed because I know that there's quite a few build-overs of former garages, former gas stations, that type of thing that exists in my district. So I'm a little nervous that this might be like the beginning of this type of thing happening, but I do have to commend the Health Department for their very, very quick response and also pointing this family in the direction of some resources that they can use as they're displaced over the next few weeks. So...
I think it was a, what, former dry cleaner that was the...
And there was some question about that, because whether it was a former dry cleaner or a former industrial laundry, either way, there was chemicals that were dumped. The plume has moved west. Luckily, on the other side of Madison, if it were to continue moving west, on the other side, you have Link, and Link has built that... Because they've built over these sites, they've built the board that prevents, you know, they're on that concrete board that prevents vapor invasion on their site.